All right. Good evening, everyone. It's the Board of Selectmen, September 29th. I'm Eric Wellman, First Selectman, and I'm going to do roll call. We've got a full house tonight. And what I thought I'd do is introduce the Board of Selectmen and then introduce our guests individually when we get to those agenda items. So Sean Ascom, hi. Mike Payne?
Hello.
Hi, Mike. Chris Peterson? Jackie Bados?
Hi.
Hi, Jackie. And Wendy, do we have Wendy? There you are. Hi, Wendy.
Hi.
All right. Why don't we call this meeting to order? And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are going to be beginning tonight with a public hearing on proposed amendments to the tax credit for elderly and disabled homeowners ordinance. So the town has an ordinance that gives homeowners a tax credit who meet eligibility criteria. And the state has made some small changes to the statute regarding this program that makes a homeowner eligible if they were a grantor or a beneficiary of a trust. Trusts were previously ineligible. So in order for us to amend the ordinance, a public hearing is required, which is what we're going to do right now. And I wanted to just confirm from staff that we have not received any public comment. I'm sorry, Maria, did you say something?
Sorry, I was on mute. I apologize. That's correct. I did not receive anything for the public hearing. Melissa, did you receive anything?
I think that was a no.
Sorry, I was on mute, too. No, nothing received.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is closed. Next, we move on to public audience. Just so folks know, there's now two ways to participate in public audience. You can continue to send your written comments, which we'll read. You can send them to our town clerk, Erica Butler, ebutler@simsbury-ct.gov. You can also join our meetings and speak in public audience virtually. And to do that, we ask that you just register by sending an email to Tom Fitzgerald, And we have two items in public comment tonight. The first is from Joan Coe. According to a recent article in the Hartford Current, after protesters marched to the Enfield Police Headquarters in June, Police Chief Alaric Fox said officers would not be making a political statement by kneeling during a political protest of Black Lives Matter in front of Simsberry Town Hall. Chief Bolter, Lieutenant Sheehan, and Lieutenant Siffo took a knee making a political statement. On September 13, 2020, there was an anti-racism demonstration to support Black Lives Matter. Simsberry Chief Bolter was the guest speaker. Another political statement. Many of the issues promoted by Black Lives Matter appear to malign the police officers. Recently, the state of Connecticut Department of Labor Board of Mediation Arbitration in a two-to-one decision upheld the termination of Sergeant Trombley, an unusual dissenting opinion stating that, "My strong opinion is the termination is not for cause and the grievance should be reinstated and made whole." Chief Bolter's questioning Trombley for untruthfulness and termination was a, quote, "political hit job." Chief Bolter never admitted to the rumor that Bolter wanted certain officers to leave the department. Do these officers now have a target on their backs? I'm including the link to the decision and the dissenting opinion in my comments for the public to review. Recently, the Board of Selectmen gave a Hometown Hero Award for the second time to Jim Fleming, who recently submitted his resignation from the Police Commission, stating that there was a dispute between Town Manager Maria Capriola concerning the authority of the Police Commission. Fleming stated, "I believe in the rule of law and find this situation untenable." On January 22, 2020, the Police Commission sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen stating, "With regard to process, there have been conflicting interpretations of the Simsberry Town Code, the Simsberry Town Charter, and the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the power and authority of both the Simsberry Police Commission and the Town Manager concerning the SPD. Members of the SPC, both individually and as a whole, have raised concerns and questions about the interpretation of these provisions. Attempts to resolve the growing conflicts since Simsberry's change of government formed over two years ago have been unsuccessful and the lack of a clear path forward is detrimental. It appears there is a power struggle between the Police Commission and the Town Manager, resulting in the resignation of Jim Fleming." As of January 2020, Tom Tbersky and Recreation Department submitted a 31-page Simsberry Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Omitted from the master plan was the golf course and the options for future management. The golf course, restaurant, and clubhouse are the largest entity at Simsberry Farms and was omitted from the master plan. Until the COVID-19 pandemic, golf has been on a decline. Many towns and private clubs have realized that professional management is an appropriate management team for cost-saving. Pickleball is a growing recreational activity, and many of the players have contacted Tom Tbersky to line the tennis courts at Simsberry Farms for pickleball. To date, Tbersky has rejected our requests. Walcott Park in West Hartford has hundreds of pickleball players on their lighted courts. The Simsberry Farms tennis courts have lights, which would increase play with many people coming to Simsberry during the day and evening hours. This would increase foot traffic at Simsberry Farms, bring people to use our restaurant and other facilities. Lights and people reduce vandalism. The Board of Finance had a meeting on September 15, 2020 with an agenda item, number three, Presentation Meadowwood Property. There was a lengthy discussion about the process to be followed with Town Manager Maria Capriola pressing for a speedy referendum vote. The Board of Finance correctly stated that the large capital expenditure should not be approved individually, but added to many projects to be proposed. The town should set a priority list, including Meadowwood, for capital projects. Town Manager Maria Capriola should not encumber the town by thwarting the policies for submitting capital projects developed by the Board of Finance. Meadowwood consists of 288 acres that's now designated as residential property. Griffin Land, the owner of the property, pay about $250,000 yearly in taxes. It appears that Griffin Land has not found a development team over the years, and the property remains vacant and will continue to remain open space without any bailout. The town has acquired the Barn Door Hills Triangle that has 45 acres. The Meadowwood acquisition designates only 27 acres that can be used for fields. Town Manager Maria Capriola is using the need for fields as talking points for the Meadowwood acquisition, although the town could use the Barn Door Hills Triangle to satisfy that is already designated for fields. All of my comments will be posted on Simsberry Patch, Twitter, @joankoe, and on Facebook. This last email comes from Jonathan Helitzer to the Simsberry Board of Selectmen. "I am a longtime resident of Simsberry, and I support the sale of the orphaned parcel behind 133 Holcomb Street with the provision that this parcel never be developed. I do not believe the sale of this particular orphaned parcel infringes on our town's open space initiatives, given the unique circumstances. Please vote yes to allow the property owner at 133 Holcomb Street to purchase the orphaned property behind their house with the provision that it never be developed and, in doing so, return the parcel onto the tax rolls of Simsberry. Thank you." So that concludes public comment tonight. Moving on to presentations. Okay. Just want to get my notes. Great. We have one presentation tonight from the Spirit Council. And this is something that's been a long time coming, something I'm very excited about. The Spirit Council was born last year out of work that the town did with the Department of Justice when the DOJ came and organized a diversity forum in town. Out of that forum, the Spirit Council was born to carry this work forward. And there has been a ton of work going on throughout the year up to this point. And I'd like to introduce the co-chairs, Cheryl Cook and Nicole Kodak. And I'll ask them to introduce the other members of the Spirit Council who are with us tonight.
Hi, Eric. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see all of you. Thank you for the introduction. This is a really important night for the Spirit Council. As you said, this has been over a year coming. We have been operating as a subcommittee of the Community for Care. As you said, the Community for Care and the Board of Education sponsored the community forum in May of 2019, which was facilitated by the Department of Justice. And you have their report in your packet. A lot of great ideas, a lot of great conversation came out of that forum. And the Spirit Council, which stands for Simsberry Problem Identification and Resolution of Issues Together, came from that forum. So you're probably wondering what we're doing now. And we have lots of very dedicated and enthusiastic Spirit Council members here tonight to talk about that. My co-chair, Nicole Kodak, who's on here. We also have our town staff liaison. Kristin Formanak is here. She has done a tremendous amount of work with us, both with the Community for Care and subsequent to that with the Spirit Council. She has both of those committees under her wing now. And it has been a great challenge, and she has done a terrific job with that. So I just want to recognize her for all of her work there. So tonight, we have with us our subcommittee chairs, Rebecca Hatch, Lloyd Huey, and Kosi Lee, and Tanisha Grant. And each one of them has prepared with their group a slide for you. And they are going to talk a little bit about where that's going. But first, I'd like to let Nicole introduce herself and say whatever she needs to say for introduction. Nicole?
Nicole is muted.
Uh-oh. I know how to do that.
There we go.
Thank you, Cheryl. And thank you to the Board of Selectmen for having us this evening and giving us time on your agenda. We were originally supposed to be meeting with you in May, but COVID has not been friendly to our work as the Spirit Council or a lot of work that's been going on. I want to thank you for prioritizing Spirit as an important part of your 2021 goals under the maintaining of quality of life and community character for Simsberry. So tonight, we're going to just present how we started, what we've been up to, and where we're headed. And at the end of tonight, we're asking you to approve Spirit as a town committee and to adopt the resolution of racism as a public health crisis. So we have some slides and each of the committee members. And then Tanisha, with the resolution, will be taking you through some of the highlights of our work. And Cheryl, why don't you start us off with the timeline?
Okay. Melissa, go. So I think I've already given you the Simsberry Spirit, an acronym. So Melissa, if we could move ahead to the timeline of the Spirit Council? Great. So this started as a big group. It started after we had some incidents at the high school that the community felt needed to be addressed. And this effort was born. After that, as I mentioned, we had the forum in May of 2019. By October of 2019, we had formed the Spirit Council under the guidance of the Department of Justice guidelines. We had our first event partnering with the Community for Care on implicit bias in March. It was March 11 of 2020. I think we were the last public program at the library before shutdown. But it was a great program, and I encourage everybody to watch it on SCTV if you haven't seen it yet. After that, we were approved by all of you, thank you very much, to have a Facebook page to allow us to communicate better with the public. And I think that has been a great success. We've had thousands of people have signed on, reviewed our material, and gained some insight into what we're doing. In July of this year, we launched the Let's Talk series, which Ncosi is going to tell you a lot more about, which has been very successful. We've had three programs already, and we have another one on Thursday of this week. And they have been informative and honest conversations between community members about difficult subjects, but conversations that need to be had. And, oh, you know, I skipped the whole part about identifying priorities and the mission. But you all can see that. I don't want to read to you from the slides. But here, in being of September, I think it was the end of August, we were fortunate enough to have you approve our banner design. Tanisha is going to talk. She led that process. And we had a great amount of input from community members and local artists, resulting in the banner that now hangs over Iron Horse Boulevard. And we are very proud of that. So tonight, as Nicole said, we're here to talk about what we're doing, where we're going, and how we need your help in order to accomplish that. So Nicole, do you want to?
Yeah. So when we first started and organized ourselves, we first looked at the work coming out of the May Forum and picked our top priorities and defined what is our mission and our vision. And our vision, we identified as a group, is that Simsberry is a town that welcomes, celebrates, and takes actions to support diversity and inclusion among current and future community members. And the next slide, mission, is that, launched in 2019, the Simsberry Spirit Council represents the community at large and serves as diversity champions to help Simsberry become more inclusive, fostering awareness, action, in a community where all voices are welcome. Each and every individual can live, work, learn, and play in a safe environment with meaningful and healthy relationships. So that was a lot of discussion. But we think we really captured the key parts about this generation and future generations and all voices being welcome in our town and taking action to be diversity champions. Our members, we have 24 very active members that represent parents and teachers, people who do this work professionally, former elected officials. We have Officer Todd Kushman and Chief Bolter that regularly attend our meetings. We have connection to and coordination with the Equity Council that works on the school part of this effort. And it's just a really fine group of very committed people to move this work forward. One of the first things we did was to develop a townwide campaign that was a loud and clear message from the May Forum. And so we defined our slogan to be #SimsberryOnTheRise. And in February, we sent letters to about 300 businesses and organizations introducing Spirit and inviting them to attend the March 11 implicit bias event with the Community for Care. Then we have the Spirit Facebook page, the Iron Horse banner, which is great. And now we are in September with a resolution that we are hoping that you will adopt declaring racism a public health crisis. And we have some more plans that we'll talk about going forward of things that we'd like to do as well. So now, I'd really like to turn it over to Ncosi Lee, another member, to talk about our events. Ncosi, you're muted.
Thank you. I just say, just to say thank you again to the Board of Selectmen for allowing us to have this moment just to share a little bit about who we are and to just take the time out to listen to our presentation as well. So I'm the chair of the event subcommittee. I'm a worker along with Gertrude Banks, Sarah Batchelder, Carol Clark, Flanagan, Lisa Grant, Tanisha Grant, Nicole Kodak, Jean Ott, and Diana Gaisley. And our purpose is to create opportunities that promote diversity and inclusion, allowing for personal growth through exposure to a variety of ideas, experiences, and cultures that make meaningful contributions to our community. And so we just, you know, obviously, with many of the events that have happened within our country throughout the spring, you know, going through the summer, we just thought it was, I don't know, just expedient to have some sort of event, you know, where we could just have dialogue, where we could have discussion. Obviously, we're not able to meet in person due to COVID restrictions. And so we were given the leeway, at least, you know, to be able to have these Zoom discussions. And that kind of gave birth to what we call our Let's Talk Dialogues. So we came up with that title. As I say, in Simsberry, you know, Let's Talk, it's time to have discussions, you know, just over some of the various issues. And so it's turned into the part that we want to promote diversity and inclusion. And so it's a broad topic with the diversity and inclusion. So obviously, it goes beyond race. And so even though that was our first discussion that we had was on August 25. Actually, the first one was August 4. But due to the storm, we had a smaller version and then had a duplicate of it on the 25. But we were just talking about having a discussion over the topic of how to be, of being not anti-racist versus non-racist, which is the work that's led by Dr. Ibram X. Kendi. And so that was our topic of discussion. And so we had quite a few people to share in our Zoom discussion. Partnered through the library. I think you saw that Lindsay from the Simsberry Public Library has been our liaison. And so, you know, they've been very beneficial and very helpful in promoting this work. And so, yeah, so we've done that. We also had another discussion for Hispanic Heritage Month. And so we had our second discussion was involving that, where we had a few guests that live in Simsberry and some that live in Hartford as well that are of Puerto Rican descent. And they were sharing some of their experiences, you know, the highlights of their culture. Obviously, that go beyond the food, that go beyond the dancing, but really just to talk a little bit about their experiences growing up, you know, things that they value as a family. And just part of, you know, perhaps some of the things that are missing in the Farmington Valley area for those that live in Simsberry, and, you know, just how they are, you know, I guess a desire to have more of their culture shared. And so it was a great discussion as well. And so it was, you know, obviously, very heartfelt. And all these discussions that we're having, they just leave a lot of room for growth. And so there's dialogue going on. They're sharing this going. It's educational. It's informative. You know, there's the issues of diversity, the issue of inclusion. But it really just allows for great dialogue. You know, perhaps people that we might not know from in-town that don't live in Simsberry. But it's just creating a great opportunity for dialogue, a great opportunity for growth. And that's, you know, a big part of what our purpose is with the events committee. We want to create opportunities for this type of growth, for this type of dialogue, which will make us, everyone involved, you know, just to make us better individuals, make us better members of the Simsberry community and of the community of the greater Hartford area. So the next one we have is this Thursday, as mentioned briefly by Cheryl. We're having our next Let's Talk on October 1 on disability awareness. And so we're having various individuals. That's going to be a panel discussion that's to tell their stories about living in Simsberry with a variety of disabilities. And so again, that feeds into that topic of diversity and inclusion. And so it'll be a lot of opportunity for growth again. And, you know, just to have the opportunity to be in someone else's shoes and to see how they view the world and see how, you know, their interactions with the world. So we have that. We're partnering with the library on October 21 for Housing and Education, racial inequality and discrimination. I believe that's part of the State Commission. We have some of the lawyers from the state. And so they're going to give some updates on how the state is moving forward in that arena as well. November's Indigenous Peoples Month. So that's another topic that we have. And these are all going to happen on the first Thursday of each month. And then, obviously, we have the opportunity to have other events within the month. But the Simsberry Let's Talk is for that first Thursday of the month. So November 16, Manju Soni, Lessons From Apartheid. She's an author. She's emigrated to the United States from South Africa. And so she's going to tell a bit of her story and her experiences growing up in South Africa. December, we have World AIDS Day. Going into 2021, human trafficking for January. February is African-American history. March 4, National Women's History. And April, the 1 is Arab-American history. May 6 is Jewish Heritage. Beginning of June 3 is the LGBTQIA Pride Month. And then also, on June 19, we'll be having a celebration there on Juneteenth Day. So again, this is just about the diversity and inclusion that we're promoting within the town, trying to develop partnerships with other libraries, partnerships with other towns. And so we're really excited about the opportunity and the room for growth that we have in this area.[1544.86] We've had some very meaningful discussions already. And we know as we continue to gain traction and gain momentum that these um uh that these discussions will continue to grow. So yeah, so that's our Sims Berry Let's Talk. And that's just what we're doing with the events um subcommittee that, you know, just it's it's a it's an awesome opportunity to be um a part of it. And as a team, we're doing a lot, you know, everyone's put in their hands um in this. And, you know, just making this um allowing it to go go very, very well. And we're really excited about moving forward um with this endeavor. So again, I thank you. And that's just a little report on what we're doing and the um Sims Berry with the Spirit Council with our um events um subcommittee. Thank you.
Thanks Lloyd.
And I don't know if you have any any questions or should just move forward?
I think we'll probably let everybody do this first. And then um the board may have questions when we get to the end. Um, but for right now, we'd like to bring Lloyd Huey on to talk about the Outreach Subcommittee. Are you there Lloyd?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Good afternoon, everyone. Or good evening and thank you um for having us on. Um, I am the Chair of the Outreach Committee. And on that committee, we have Cheryl, we have Sue Lemke, Chris Kelly, John Robichaud, and Diana Yisley. And um, you know, the the goal of the Outreach Committee is to promote awareness of what the Spirit Committee is doing. And Kosi just spoke about the different things that the that the committee is doing. And part of make creating awareness and allowing people to come to hear and to speak is to reach out to the community and connect with different organizations so that we can learn about each other, understand each other. Because unfortunately, one of the things we do is we tend to fear the things we do not know. And so by reaching out and connecting with different organizations about what's going on, about what we're doing, and having them become a part of these conversations will help to create a greater opportunity to accomplish our mission of allowing Sims Berry to be more welcoming, more diverse, and more supportive of the of diversity and inclusion. So our goal is to partner with various groups within Sims Berry, working with uh DEI initiatives, whether it's with Facebook groups or whatever groups they are. We also look to collaborate with regional and state entities uh within the towns, within with colleges, university, even with other towns and communities. Um, we also are planning to facilitate a racial history discussion series to help people to develop a greater understanding of race in America. And a lot of times, if you haven't been a part of certain environment, you're not aware of certain things that have happened and that people have experienced. And so by having this racial history sessions will help other people to learn more about what's going on. So part of our goal is to connect with like the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, uh New Commerce Club, with various groups within our community to allow them to allow us to have a greater reach into their community within their teams so that they can learn more about what the Spirit Committee is doing and join in with us. And um the other thing that we're looking to do um as the Outreach Committee is to reach out and partner with groups like the NAACP, the Disabilities Communities, State Human Rights and Commission, um CREG, and those different groups and organizations so that we can help to bring in other individuals who can share with it with our community things that uh we're doing. And we can partner with other towns, other communities, whether it's with Granby, with Farmington, with Hartford, Bloomfield, partner with these different towns to help create a more diverse and welcoming environment for all. So that's a part of what the Spirit Outreach Comit- Outreach Subcommittee is looking to do and has been doing. And, you know, with the help of um members of our team, Cheryl and so many others. You know, as was mentioned earlier, we were able to send out um some 300 letters to different towns, to different individuals within the town um back in March, when we were doing the implicit bias event. And that allowed people within the community who were not aware of what we were doing to come out and learn more about us. So just wanted to put that out there. And if you have any questions, um later on, we can field those. Thank you.
Thanks Lloyd.
My pleasure, thank you.
It's a big agenda, thank you. Um, now we have Rebecca Hatch. Um, she leads the Data and Audit Subcommittee.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks. Um, I'll echo everyone's gratitude for having us tonight to talk about this, to present our plan. Um, we have been indeed hard at work, so we're glad to be here with you tonight. I chair this committee, but I work with uh five other folks uh right alongside Gertrude Banks, Meg Evans, Mary Margaret Gargenti, Wendy Helm Camp, and Chris Kelly, all sort of plugging away at ways that we can essentially um add a layer of accountability and transparency to our work as the Spirit Council. Um, and at its very uh very basic purpose is to gather data and to assess assess progress towards goals that we um will continue establishing as a Sims Berry Spirit Council. And then, of course, we have some detailed ways in which we're hoping to go about gathering that data um to engage an expert to assist with gathering that data. Um, we have had the chance to review um similar processes that many other towns across the country have been through. Um, and one of the common threads is uh that they um partnered with someone to do this work with them. Um, when we talk, for instance, about surveying our community to get quantitative data, um, that requires some expertise, um that requires somebody to help guide us in a way that makes our work efficient and worthwhile and accurate. Um, and our group feels pretty committed to um and convicted that quantitative data and qualitative data along the lines of what Ncosi was talking about with the Events Committee, gathering the the data that comes out of community conversations and for chances, the chances that we will continue to provide as a committee for people to come together and share their thoughts and experiences. So we see this happening in at least those two different ways. Long game, right? We're also talking about this committee recommending follow-up plans or actions with community involvement all along the way. Um, there's no other way for work like this to um to gain the power and traction that it needs without as many members of the community feeling like they're part of it as possible. Um, creating benchmarks using existing and not yet collecting data and then to monitor that progress as um the Data Subcommittee and Spirit Council. And I think there's another slide, just to give you an example. Yes, thank you. Um, we pulled it straight out of a survey done through the town of Marion, Iowa, um, that had quite a few um questions. But just to give you an idea of what kinds of things these instruments can help us see, we wanted to include just a very brief sample from one of these kinds of surveys. Um, we've looked at quite a few. There's a lot of variety. Um, and ideally, we would work with an expert to help us come up with a survey that would um work, uh, give us the best information about the climate around diversity, equity, inclusion in the town of Sims Berry. I think that sums up where we are with data and audit. Cheryl? You're on mute Cheryl. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Um, I just wanted to pause for a second to say, um, well, all the subcommittees are doing great work. Um, this Subcommittee is is the one that um we will probably produce some type of a budget request out of. Um, and we are working with Kristin to help us frame that um and what that might look like. Um, because obviously, for all the great things that Rebecca was talking about, um, we are going to need some assistance in in doing that and gathering that quantitative and qualitative data. Um, that being, I just wanted to point that out in case you have any questions following. Uh, now I'd like to introduce Tanisha Grant. Um, and she was instrumental in bringing forward the resolution that is before you tonight. Uh, she also led the way on the um the banner and the development of the design. So Tanisha, are you there?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Um, and again, just like everyone else said, thank you so much for giving us an opportunity um to present the work that we have been doing thus far since the inception of Spirit and then also the work that we can want to continue to do going forward. Um, so in front of you is um this the resolution that we came up with for the town. This came about from the June council meeting um that we had. And it was right after things had been going on with George Floyd. And we thought that it was um pertinent and important for Sims Berry to adopt a resolution that was similar to what was what other towns had been doing. We also thought that it would be great for Sims Berry to spearhead this for the Farmington Valley District, seeing how we would be the first um to do this in this in this area. So it was drafted by Wendy Helm Camp, Sharon Thomas, and myself. And the importance of this, like I said, it was it started from the George Floyd thing, but it's getting other folks um in town to understand that um health inequities pose a serious consequence to um everyone that's in that's in um be either being exploited or marginalized as a result of it. Um, it in it um health inequity limits the ability to gain access to resources um that folks that people need. And they're less likely to achieve full human capabilities, um such as well-paid employment um and live participating in social and political life. And as you can, as you, as you are all aware of, the majority of the folks that are policymakers are not um people of color. And so when policies are enacted, it typically has a negative impact on people of color, which is why um it's important for us to to make a um a declaration that it's a public health crisis, um that racism is a public health crisis. So the resolution will be used to help us um to collect data that can be used to inform the work that we are tasked with doing as a town for our residents and then also for the community at large. And it's looking at current town practices um with the intention on how specific activities of the event committees or the outreach committee um and policies and how we can use it to enhance diversity and leadership staffing and um contractors that that come to do work in the town of Sims Berry. And so creating allies, like Lloyd has said, with um other organizations that are doing the same work, other um commissions around the state of Connecticut that are um that are also doing the same work. And just to make sure that Sims Berry is relevant in practices that um have an impact on um individuals of color. And so I'm I'm not going to read this, but I just want to say that this is very important for for the town to adopt. And again, if you guys have any questions about this, um feel free to to do so.
Thank you, Tanisha.
You're welcome.
Do it again. Thank you, Tanisha. Um, so our last slide uh is just for next steps. Um, Nicole, do you want to run us through the next steps?
Sure. Um, so we're hoping tonight that we get approved as a town committee and that you will uh vote to adopt the resolution. Um, we understand that your next meeting is in two weeks, October 14th. So we were hoping that that might be the time that you would appoint specific members to the town committee. Um, we've got work to do between now and then with the organizing and housekeeping. Our next meeting on the schedule is November 2nd for our annual calendar. Um, so that would be the roles, our Subcommittee Heads adopting a calendar, policies and procedures with the help of our staff liaison, Kristin, um, updating our member contact information, deciding what um commissions that are already existing that we would like to have people be liaisons to sit in and um, you know, feedback information on um things that impact this work in our town. Um, obviously, our goal setting would have to happen. We don't have a specific date for that. So we've talked about how to put that into existing meetings or having um special meetings. And then in November, to try to um mesh up with the budget cycle forwarding plans with budget requests, which as Cheryl um already has mentioned, would probably largely be with the Data and Audit Subcommittee.
Exactly. Um, so I Eric, I don't know if you want to open it up to questions. We're all available here to answer anything we can.
Yeah, I know we have uh a few orders of business coming out of of this discussion, but I wanted to um open it up for uh questions and conversation. Can I just begin? You know, e- each of you in your presentation started by saying, thank you for this forum. And each time, I just wanted to say, no, seriously, thank you for the energy, the level of uh the the level of uh commitment and organization around this work. I am just profoundly appreciative. Um, I know Ncosi and I, um, I've never uh actually talked to you outside of a big forum like this, but I have had the opportunity to participate in a couple of your uh previous uh community conversations, both just incredibly um powerful and moving and helped me in some ways um gain a level of empathy and understanding that I didn't previously have. And I just encourage every member of the public and every member of this board to take a look at that that list of a year's worth of uh of of monthly forums and um and consider attending several of them. I I'm going to put each one on the calendar because I found them all very um very profound in their own way. Um, I wanted to open it up to um other questions or conversation from the board.
Eric, if I could?
Done.
Um, I I echo Eric's comments. Thank you, guys, for for all your work and and effort. It's nice to see familiar faces and and a lot of new folks here. Uh, I think I think this is really outstanding. And and I was going to ask, um, what I'll I'll admit is now a stupid question. I was going to ask what success look like looks like and how do we make progress? And then I realized that's really stupid because this is success. You guys, you guys are already moving the needle. You're already making a difference. The fact that we're having this conversation at the Board of Selectmen, um, the fact that there's a, I think, a really impactful resolution before us. Um, and then we're talking about doing some tangible work here. We're not just um, we're not just going to all agree to a piece of paper and go on back to our lives. Um, and that was something that that Eric and I and and a few of you have already talked about and and something that I thought was um really important that, you know, we do a lot here at the town level and and many of you experience that, you know, Sheri sitting up here with us. Um, and we do a lot of things where we 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 quote unquote, cut a ribbon, right? And this isn't a cut a ribbon topic. This is a really important topic that it impacts all of us in different ways and and hits us all differently in the journey. So um, I I really applaud you guys for for um starting this conversation with us, um, but really moving this conversation forward with the community. And and I look forward to being held accountable, both at this level um and at the Subcommittee level. And and in many ways, as as this is something I think we should put the entire community of resources um behind so that we are continuing to move the needle forward. And and that stupid question of what does success look like continues to be irrelevant in that we're we're continuing to make progress. So um, really, that's uh just, again, thank you, guys, for for coming and doing this.
Eric, if I could jump in?
Please, Mike.
Um, I I have to freely admit that uh I went to the uh main meeting and I was a little taken back by some of the comments that people made. Um, but in all honesty, um, I came away from that and um my discussions up to and including today with people that uh um all of us have our personal biases on everything. And uh um kind of came to a a realization. And uh you people are probably way ahead of me, but we're all imperfect. And uh to to Sean's answer, what does the success look like? I I honestly think it's it's an ongoing baby step where tomorrow is better than today. And we have to be relentless, um, but we have to to still move it forward because people deserve our best efforts. And uh that's the only way the town will move forward. So I I really do want to thank everybody in your committee. And uh, looks like you got a great group and uh look forward to uh coming back in two weeks and approving everybody for it. So thank you, guys, very much for bringing us forward.
Thanks, Mike. Is there any else from the board? Uh, Chris?
Hi, guys. Good evening. Uh, thanks again for the presentation. I um, so this is actually a question you can possibly um help me with relative to um how somebody might gain or access um advice or information at the individual level. So um, you 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 folks talked up, talked about a couple of the points of the genesis points um of the council, which uh unfortunately um this coming along is 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 coming along too far too late. Likely, there should have been, there had been so many more points across recent history could have been accepted. But I applaud you for all taking the time to step your foot forward and not looking side to side, waiting for somebody else to take these kinds of initiatives. Um, my my, the George Floyd event, uh, if you go back to the discussion we as a team had around that the Board of Selectmen meeting um early in the year, the George Floyd event was very impactful in my own household because I've got young, as Cheryl knows, I've got four young kids. And um, and it was the first time we had really ever talked about race uh in our family. And I think I did a good, okay job, uh, you know, as best as a father can, but certainly came away feeling that I could have, uh, I could have used some assistance uh beyond my 85-year-old mother as well, who who provided insight as well. And it brought forth, uh, it has brought forward continued conversations um around, I'll just call them the general human challenges that many people of which, whatever their identity is, face. And the each time I come away feeling I gave an imperfect answer. And so I'm wondering, i- is there a place that someone may be able to in the design of your delivery, the service, the delivery, the message delivery that you go forward with, whether it's your Facebook page or someplace else, that someone may be able to drop in a comment or a question, asking essentially for personal assistance on a certain topic that they may not feel comfortable bringing forward in a public forum and a public event? Um, because as you noted, I mean, as Eric mentioned, that I look at that calendar of events and if it wasn't for the damn pandemic, what a great experience it would be to be in that room personally, uh, being a participant in those conversations. But I'll leave it at that, though, again, going back, where could I essentially? If if it was me, if it was somebody who looked like me, who might need some help, could put a question in and get some feedback or get some direction?
Cheryl, were you going to jump in?
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, there are lots of people in this meeting tonight um who I'm sure would be willing to have a a personal conversation with you. Um, we've been having them with each other. Um, and I can say on a personal level, um, I have gained knowledge and, as Eric said, empathy and understanding that I didn't have before I knew these wonderful people. Um, and and sitting in those Zoom calls with our Let's Talk series and listening to the people tell about their their personal experiences has been eye-opening and at times cringe-worthy. And it has, it has forced all of us, I think, to say, to look at ourselves in a very clear light and say, what can we do? And I think And I think um, and Kosi talked about our our first two programs on being not racist and anti-racist. And it's a lot, it's a lot to understand and it's, I'm not even going to come close to understanding. Um, but we're all trying. And I think if somebody needs to have a personal conversation, I might start with talking to our Social Services Director, Kristen, who's our liaison, who um, is the keeper of confidential information, if you wish it. And and she could direct you to any one of our committee members who would be, I'm sure, more than willing to have a conversation with you. And any of you who'd like to jump in here, please do.
Uh, Kristen, are you gonna jump in?
Yes, thank you. Um, also, just to add to that, that um, we've recently added in a library liaison to the Spirit Council. Um, and she's been a wonderful resource, uh, Lindsay Neffinger. I'm hoping I said her last name correctly. Please excuse me if I didn't. Um, and one of the things that she's going to be working on to help Spirit Council is to develop a list of resources. Um, and that that's going to be books, it could be social media sites, um, magazines, news articles, um, you name it. So we're going to be building on that list as a list of resources to be made available to the public. Um, and so we hope to release that soon. So that'll be another avenue for people to to gain information.
I think. Did um, uh, Nicole and Kosi?
Now, I would just also say, you know, and part of our discussions, um, Chris, is that we um, we have, if you're, if you ha- have the time to join us, you know, part of what we do is we have an ongoing chat room, you know, on the side. So while the discussions are going, we we're able in real time, you know, to look at some of the questions, you know, that the audience has and as well, we're, um, we we um, connect with each other, um, the participants also via, you know, our email addresses. And so we're there with whoever is a participant, that there's always the opportunity there. Um, A, to ask questions and then B, to have the opportunity to network, to have further, you know, discussion as well. So with that, um, tool that we're utilizing through Zoom plus with the um, through the library with some of the um, the books and things that we'll be able to use for resources, that's something we're trying to move, you know, our ourselves to, to be able to answer some of these um, questions that individuals may have. So, you know, we hope that you can have, you know, the opportunity to um, to to um, join in with one of our discussions. And, you know, we'll have a a steady opportunity to network with each other with some of these perhaps day-to-day questions that might happen in the middle of the month or something that may happen at the end of the month or any time, you know, that that's not um, at a time when we're having an event. But, you know, join in and we can, we'll use the opportunity to network as well.
Thanks.
And Chris, um, just so you know, for your, for your children who are in the school system, uh, the Equity Council, who is our education partner in this work. Um, the Spirit Council is the the community side of this discussion. And the Board of Education has the Equity Council, which is the education side of this discussion. Um, so your children could probably find resources through their schools. Um, maybe Nicole could speak to this. She serves on both because she has children in the schools now, too.
I have five kids, but they're not so young. Um, the, but but I have one in the middle school right now and um, I know that the Equity Council has just adopted the um, Equity Statement, which is sort of the lens through which they're going to be making all the changes in um, curriculum, um, handling of um, the climate, student referrals for discipline, attendance, um, access to advanced courses, that kind of thing. Um, and I I think that they have decided to meet more frequently to try to make the work happen more quickly because it's a lot of work. Um, Lloyd and Ncosi are also on that so, um, the council. Um, I think the library is a great place for us to start as a town because we are talking about having a youth forum or or youth version of the Simsbury Let's Talk. We thought about that before. And um, we have already a pretty big growing list of resources of books that are uh, appropriate from younger all the way up to adult ages, um, podcasts, movies, that kind of thing. Um, and to be fair, we are not just doing this alone. There are other groups in town, like the Holding Door, the Door Open Group, who are also contributing to that resource list. And we um, support each other because we're all doing the same kind of work. Um, and so one of our revelations has been to try to find our lane um, versus their lane and um, not duplicate work, but but support each other's type of work. And our lane, working with Kristen and and you guys as a town committee, um, is to be the town organization, to do things like Tanisha bringing forward the resolution and um, working with the library and um, that kind of thing. So we sometimes are learning how to operate within the governmental framework with FOI, you know, requirements and so forth, but um, and there are times when other groups will be able to go more quickly um, and agilely. But um, we are really happy about the support and the climate that you're giving us, um, making this work a priority. And um, so we're really excited to be in this lane with you.
Thank you. Was um, was there uh, anything else that any uh, questions or reflections that any other member of the board wanted to share? Okay. Um, so we do have a few related orders of business, and the first is uh, forming a town committee. Um, in previous conversations with Cheryl, um, it was suggested we form the town committee uh, tonight. And then we would uh, appoint the members at our next meeting. And um, I I think in determining the right size, um, it's hard to know what number is perfect, but I wanted to suggest um, creating a committee, um, at least initially out of the gate with eighteen members. Um, with the idea being that we uh, we want the flexibility for if there are new members um, who are introduced, who are passionate about this work, that they would be able to join, but by no means do we have to have um, all eighteen spots full at at any given time. So I uh, let me uh, see if I can find the motion. Uh, is there a motion effective September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty to create the Spirit Council as an official town special committee with eighteen members?
All moved.
Second.
Is there any questions or further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Um, let's uh, let's move on to uh, the part I'm really excited about, which is the resolution. Um, Melissa, would you be able to put that on the screen? Perfect. So I thought it would be a a powerful thing for all of the members of the Board of Selectmen to lend their voices to reading this. Um, so we will take turns alternating each paragraph and and I'll begin. This is a a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. And I'll share that there's also information in our packet for anyone interested that we received from the Farmington Valley Health District that really backs up the science of what we are, uh, what we're talking about here. Whereas racism is a social system with multiple dimensions, including one, individual racism, that is interpersonal. And two, systemic racism that is institutional or structural and is a system of structuring opportunity and assigning value based on the social interpretation of how one looks. And?
Whereas race is a social construct with no biological basis. And?
Whereas racism unfairly disadvantages specific individuals and communities while unfairly giving advantages to other individuals and communities and saps the strength of the whole society through the waste of human resources. And?
Whereas racism is a root cause of poverty and constricts economic mobility. And?
Whereas racism causes persistent discrimination and disparate outcomes in many areas of life, including housing, education, employment, and criminal justice, and is itself a social determinant of health. And?
Whereas racism and segregation have exacerbated a health divide, resulting in people of color in Connecticut bearing a disproportionate burden of illness and mortality, including COVID-nineteen infection and death, heart disease, diabetes, and infant mortality. And?
Whereas black, Native American, Asian, Latinx, and other residents of color are more likely to experience poor health outcomes as a consequence of inequities in economic stability, education, physical environment, food, and access to healthcare. And these inequities are themselves a result of racism. And?
Whereas many studies have linked racism to worse health outcomes. And?
Mike, that's you.
I was muted. I apologize. It's almost done. Whereas the collective prosperity and well-being of the town of Simsbury depends on equitable access to opportunity for every resident regardless of the color of their skin.
Do I take that?
You take it.
Now, therefore, be resolved by the Town of Simsbury. Two.
One, declare racism a public health crisis affecting all of the United States, including Connecticut.
Two, work to become an equity and justice-oriented organization by continuing to identify specific activities and policies to enhance diversity and to ensure anti-racism principles across our leadership, staffing, and contracting.
And uh, three, promote equity through all policies and enhance educational efforts aimed at understanding, addressing, and dismantling racism and how it affects the delivery of human and social services, economic development, and public safety.
Oh, and then uh, it's messed up, but I've got a draft here. Uh, four, set clear goals and objectives and improve the quality and analysis of the data the town collects to assess progress. It is not enough to assume that initiative is producing its intended outcome. Qualitative and quantitative data should be used to assess inequities in impact, in impact, and continuously improve.
And I don't know.
I have it in front of me. I'm gonna keep going.
Please.
Um, five, capitalize on opportunities to further advance racial um, inequity in education, in housing, uh, in health, in food security, and in criminal justice.
Six. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Can I, did I lose my turn?
Nah, you're up, Mike.
You're good, Mike.
Six, advocate locally for relevant policies that improve the health of people of color and support local, state, regional, and federal initiatives that advance efforts to dismantle symptemic, sim, bleh, symptemic racism. I apologize.
Number seven, work to solidify alliances and partnerships with other organizations that are confronting racism. Encourage other local, state, regional, and national entities to recognize racism as a public health crisis.
Number eight, use community efforts to amplify issues of racism and engage actively and authentically with communities of color wherever they live.
So um, thank you. A special thank you to Tanisha Grant, Wendy Helm Camp, and Sharon Thomas, who uh, helped draft this uh, this powerful resolution. I wanted to uh, see if there's a motion effective uh, tonight, September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, to adopt the attached resolution and declare racism a public health crisis.
All moved.
Second.
Chris seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you. Um, I I'm to piggyback on this, I wanted to uh, make an additional motion. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, flexible on the wording of this. I wasn't exactly sure um, how to frame this, but I I wanted to make a motion asking the town manager to work with her department heads to review uh, town policies and procedures with an equity lens and come back to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation on uh, changes, improvements, and updates.
Uh, I'll second that motion, Eric.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Well, I, again, I uh, wanted to thank our guests for being here tonight and uh, I'm I'm very uh, I'm very motivated and excited about this work and so glad that the Spirit Council is an official town committee and we can move this work forward.
Thank you all for your work. Appreciate it.
This is uh, the time of the meeting when we're in person, when everyone stands up and leaves, and then we approve tax refunds.
Yeah, we don't take it personally if you leave.
No, we don't.
Everybody does it to us.
I wish everyone a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eric, you have to stay.
All right, we're gonna move on to the uh, first selectman's report and then the town manager's report. Uh, starting this Friday, October second, the town clerk will start mailing out absentee ballots to people who've requested one. Earlier this month, the Secretary of State's office mailed absentee ballot applications to all registered voters. Anyone can vote absentee in the upcoming general election by indicating a fear of COVID as a reason on the application. Applications can also be downloaded from the Registrar Our Voters page on the town website. Um, that page is also a good resource for information. Um, that's at that uh, that's being aggregated. From that page, you can confirm if you're registered to vote, your polling location, and more. Uh, for questions related to absentee voting, you can call our town clerk, eight-six-zero-six-five-eight-thirty-two-forty-three. If there are any other election-related questions that don't pertain to absentee, you can reach out to our town's registrars. Couple updates from the planning department. Construction on Big Y is progressing. This store is scheduled for a soft opening the last week of October. The zoning commission's received an application for the development of a parcel that's currently vacant just west of the Hoffman dealership on Route forty-four. That application calls for the construction of a gas station and an electric car dealership. It would be the first of its kind in Connecticut. That property was recently rezoned from residential to commercial. I wanted to provide an update on the potential acquisition of a nearly three-hundred-acre parcel known as Meadowwood. On September sixteenth, the Board of Finance heard a presentation from the Trust for Public Land, a nonprofit organization that the town is engaged to assist with this purchase. To learn more about the history of the pop property and the potential acquisition, you can view a presentation. It's posted on the town's website on the Open Space Committee's page. Um, the Simsbury Art Trail, uh, featuring thirty-six life-size statues will be coming to an end on October fifth. A closing ceremony will take place at the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center on October sixth. Big thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this spectacular trail and to the many individuals and businesses whose donations made it possible. Also, the three-hundred-fiftieth anniversary committee has unveiled a history walk, three hundred fifty years of Simsbury in three hundred fifty steps. It's located along the Greenway next to the Performing Arts Center. And the history walk tells the story of Simsbury with pictures, dates, and fun facts. The history walk is a collaboration with the Simsbury Historical Society, the Free Library, and the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. Uh, because of COVID, the three-hundred-fiftieth committee has had to reschedule and reimagine many of their planned celebrations. You can find the latest schedule at simsberrythreefifty.com. I'll turn it over to Maria with the town manager's report.
Great, thanks, Eric. Good evening, everyone. So very good news to report. Um, we will be welcoming back in-person visitors to Town Hall beginning Monday, October fifth. Um, for folks who do come that day, I'm actually taking the first rotation on our front desk. So I'm really excited again about, you know, welcoming our our residents back to the building. Um, during this next phase of reopening, uh, in-person visits can be conducted between eight-thirty in the morning and noon on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Uh, we will be reserving the first hour of the day uh, from eight-thirty to nine-thirty AM for seniors. Um, however, during this time period, the town clerk's office, uh, the vault in that area uh, will not be available for walk-ins, and we still ask that folks contact the town clerk's office for appointments if needed. Uh, the library is also welcoming back in-person visitors on a limited basis starting this coming week. Um, on October sixth, uh, for Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten AM to four PM. Um, the first hour will also be reserved for seniors from ten AM to eleven AM. The library will also be welcoming in-person visitors on Saturdays from nine-thirty in the morning until one-thirty PM. Um, patrons during that time may browse and check out materials during their visit. Patrons during that time may browse and check out materials during their visit. We're also allowing one hour of computer use per person per day, as well as access to the Business and Career Center. We have additional information available through my report with more detailed information regarding visits to Town Hall and the library. It was also sent out through News and Announcements and is available on our social media accounts. We are continuing to take a cautious approach to reopening the senior center due to public health guidance that we continue to receive. So at this time, you know, we'll remain closed to walk-ins until further notice. And we do continue to reevaluate that on about an every-two-week basis. However, despite not having walk-ins at the senior center, Social Services continues to do a great job providing virtual programming for our seniors. They're also continuing their food programs. We have reinstated the weekly blood pressure and blood sugar screenings. They will be having flu shots offered at the senior center on October 8th and 22nd. That is by, I believe, by appointment or preregistration. And we are also happy to announce that we are able to begin foot care and hearing clinics again. So information regarding those various medical services are also available in the town manager's report for those interested. We also just wanted to remind folks that the extension of temporarily suspending cash payments is now through January 1st of 2021. And that, again, is to help us reduce the risk of spreading COVID. Payments can be made by check, by debit card, or credit card. They can also be mailed to Town Hall at 933 Hot Meadows Street in Simsbury or left at our secure dropbox at Town Hall. And some of the other updates are from last meeting. So just in the essence of time this evening, I will not go over those this evening, but they are available again in the town manager's report. For Department News and Notes from Culture Parks and Recreation, the Friends of the Simsbury Farms are holding their annual golf tournament this coming Friday, October 2nd. And of note, Mike Wallace, our golf course superintendent, who has been with us for over 16 years, he has just been a tremendous asset to this town, the organization, just a really terrific person, and he is retiring at the end of the calendar year. So we're really sad to lose him. But, but they will be celebrating his service at the tournament. So information for folks who might like to attend the tournament or just to celebrate Mike and his service to the town, we have information available at fosfgolf.com. And if the public gathering permit is approved tonight, we will be proceeding with a Halloween spooktacular event that is a joint partnership between the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, the Simsbury Performing Arts Center, and our Culture Parks and Recreation Department. They've worked really hard to provide a safe, essentially reverse trick-or-trunk format for children and their families in this COVID environment. So preregistration is required, and the link to sign up is at simsburyrec.com. News from Finance, we're really excited. Our new accountant, Anna Knapp, is on board. She started work with us on September 8th. Anne comes to us from the town of Soullington most recently, where she was an accountant for four years and the office supervisor for their water department for five years. She has a bachelor's degree in economics and finance from the University of Hartford, and she has a master's in finance from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. She's already become an essential part of our team just in these few short weeks, and she's been a tremendous help with assisting with our accounting system. So welcome, Anne. From our library, beginning September 15th, we extended our curbside service to 8 p.m. to help patrons who need evening hours. So again, for folks who would like to sign up for curbside service, they can go to simsburylibrary.info. From Public Works, we have a household hazardous waste collection that's coming up on October 17th that will be held at the Public Works facility on Town Forest Road. Information about what you can bring to the event can be found at the Public Works website or on the link through the manager's report. And from Social Services, open Medicare enrollment is coming up October 15th through December 7th of 2020. And we do have one of our staff members who is a certified choices counselor. She is available to help seniors with advice regarding options that are available to them. There will also be a Medicare signup presentation via Zoom on Thursday, October 6th at 1 p.m. Details can be obtained through the senior center. And Simsbury Social Services is now accepting applications for the Energy Assistance 2020-2021 Heating Program. Due to COVID, at this time, we're receiving applications by phone and email. There is additional information regarding the upcoming flu clinics and blood pressure clinics as well in the report. And lastly, from our town clerk's office, they are currently processing a large volume of absentee ballot applications and do anticipate processing a large number of ballots. So they are encouraging folks who would like to drop them off, to drop them off rather than physically coming into the office to, if they can, please drop them off in the secure dropboxes in front of Town Hall. And ballots will be going out on October 2nd for applications that we've already received. For all applications that have been received after October 2nd, the town clerk's office must process those within about 48 hours of receipt. So those were just a couple of key points we wanted to share for the clerk's office. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, thanks, Maria.
Thank you.
Moving on to selection action. Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $4,825.01 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Item B, the town is interested in applying for an emergency management performance grant of nearly $25,000. The grant goes to the Fire District, and the town serves as a pass-through. I wanted to see if staff wanted to add any additional details or if there were any questions from the board? Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to apply for the 2020-2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award, should it be awarded?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mike. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item B, I'm sorry, C, the town has the opportunity to apply for a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. It's a nonpartisan organization that provides technical assistance to election administrators, and the grant would help cover certain costs incurred by the new COVID protocols, including personal protective equipment for poll workers, site cleaning, and even additional staff for processing ballots. I wanted to see if there were any questions on this item. Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to submit the Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response Grant and authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute the grant application?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And related, is there a motion to accept the Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response Grant and authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute all documents related to the grant award? Should we get it?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item D, the proposed acceptance of the Greater Hartford Transit District Dial-A-Ride Assistance Grant. The town is anticipating a grant of approximately $6,600 from the Greater Hartford Transit District to support our Dial-A-Ride program. Any questions or anything staff wanted to add on this item? Is there, was someone gonna jump in?
Sure. Eric, I'm just thrilled to have this. This was part of our budget, and it will help, if we get it, it'll help keep us on schedule for replacing the vans. So I'm very excited about this.
Awesome, thanks, Jackie. Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to accept the fiscal year 2021 grant funds from the Greater Hartford Transit District to support our Dial-A-Ride program and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Item E, our proposed updates to the Golf Course Superintendent Classification. So as we heard in Maria's report, Simsbury's Golf Course Superintendent, Mike Wallace, is retiring after 16 years of service to the town, and staff is proposing updating the job description, which dates back to 2004. The changes are largely housekeeping to reflect modern technology and current practices and duties of the position. Any questions for Tom on this item? Or Tom, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you covered it. It's just largely housekeeping to the job description, no added responsibilities. I'm just updating the language to modern, I guess, description. I guess is the best way to say it. But yeah, no, we're looking forward to sending Mike off on a high note. Certainly, you've had a great year at the golf course, and the feedback from the players this year is that the course has never been in better condition, and that's largely due to the efforts of Mike and his team and the impact Mike has had on that golf course over the last 16 years.
Great, thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to approve the proposed changes to the job description for the Golf Course Superintendent Classification as presented?
So moved.
Heard it's a tie.
When you can have it.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Number of public gathering permits tonight? The, this is item F, the Public Gathering Committee has approved the application for the Art Trail Closing Ceremony. That event is scheduled for October 6th at the Performing Arts Center. Was there anyone who wanted to talk a little bit about what this event is gonna entail?
Sure, I'll jump in.
Awesome, thanks, Missy.
Thanks for having me. So the Simsbury Art Trail, as you know, has been going on for a number of weeks now, and it is time to close things down, but we want to make sure, along with the chambers' help, that we send them off on a fond farewell. So there will be up to about a dozen statues on-site at the Performing Arts Center for the closing ceremony. Like we've done all of our events this year, it will be a completely socially-distanced event with our circles on the field. So folks will be coming in, bidding farewell to the statues. Fitzgerald will have some catering available, as well as we'll have some beer and wine for folks to enjoy as they bid farewell.
Awesome, thanks, Missy. Any questions for Missy? Okay. Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to approve the public gathering application for the Art Trail Closing Ceremony and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the event?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Kathy, please speak up if you need, if you need any ties broken or use your best judgment. Item G, there's a benefit concert scheduled for October 10th at the Performing Arts Center to support the Performing Arts Center. It'll include performances by Organized Chaos and Codes and Keys. Love the name. Missy, what else can you tell us about this event?
So, the biggest thing I want to say, of course, is that it is a benefit for SIMPAC. And although folks have seen activity down there, much like so many of the stages around the country, we lost our biggest entertainment events, and that was somewhat catastrophic to the budget as it was around the country for, for other folks. So we decided, thanks to Organized Chaos approaching us and offering their services for free, to do a benefit concert. They are a wonderful, high-energy band. They were our most popular group at September Fest last year. They do medleys, so I would encourage people to come out. It's gonna be a great time, again, socially-distanced. We will have beer and wine available. We'll welcome Frankie's Food Truck and TCBY to the mix, have some pizza slices for sale. So, again, a nice opportunity for families to come out and enjoy. It's an earlier evening, so it's running 4:00 to 7:00. And we would love to see you. Visit simsburymeadowsmusic.com for your tickets.
Awesome. I have had people reach out to me, saying, lamenting at the loss of so many annual events that we love, but they are also being replaced by other things on a smaller scale that
Yes.
we can, in some, in an alternative universe that we're living in, be appreciative of, and I really mean that. So, thank you. Any questions from the board for Missy on this item? Okay, is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to approve the public gathering application for the 2020 SIMPAC Benefit Concert and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the event?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. That motion carries. Item H, the town is teaming up with the Performing Arts Center and the Chamber of Commerce to hold a drive-through trick-or-treating event on October 18th. I know Maria spoke a little bit about it during the, during her town manager's report. I want to see if either Missy or Tom wanted to just give another plug for this event. I know if our board doesn't approve this, I'm not gonna be allowed in the House tonight. Looking forward to it.
Ooh.
Of course.
Did it not pass it or pass it, Eric?
No, if they don't approve the public gathering permit, I'm gonna be in trouble.
I'll just add that Missy and Morgan and I from the, from the chamber, we've fought long and hard about a way to make this event work with Halloween and COVID and, and all of those things. A lot of time, whatever went into this, I think it's a creative way to offer the town, the residents, an option for their kids, and also a way for the businesses to get some FaceTime with some of the, some members of the public. Hopefully, it'll be a great weather day, and we'll have, have a lot of fun down there. But it is a unique opportunity. It is filling up quickly. I can't stress that enough. We're about half-capacity already, and it's been about a week.
Wow.
More than a week of registration so far. So if you are planning to go, there's three different times of the day, morning, afternoon, or early evening, that you can choose to go, and I would sign up as soon as you can.
Right.
And just to add to that, the overall experience is you drive down Iron Horse Boulevard, you're getting treats from businesses who are set up with tents along Iron Horse, and then you end your experience at the Performing Arts Center with some entertainment. Again, food vendors, beer, wine for mom and dad if they're interested for their treats. But it should be a really nice day for the entire family. And big shout out to the Simsbury Police Department for helping us get creative on this one as well.
Awesome. And questions for Missy and Tom?
Could you just say where they sign up? Sorry, Tom. Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to approve the public gathering application for the 2020 Spooktacular Drive-Thru and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the event?
So moved.
Second.
All, any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one more public gathering permit. This is for the, the annual pumpkin sale organized jointly by Trinity Church and First Church. It'll take place outside of Boy Scout Hall, September 30th through November 7th. I saw there are already pumpkins lined up, ready to go. Any questions about this event? Okay. Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020, to approve the public gathering application on behalf of Trinity Church, First Church, and to authorize the issuance of a public gathering permit for the Fall 2020 Pumpkin Patch Event?
So moved.
Second.
Well done. Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item J, I wanted to have a, some discussion with the board around possibly expanding administrative approvals for public gathering permits for recurring events. So, as you know, I think it was late last year with the Performing Arts Center's new contract, recurring events at the PAC can now be approved at an administrative level. This item, if the board is supportive, we would extend administrative approvals to all recurring events as long as there are no substantive changes from previous year. to all recurring events, as long as there are no substantive changes from previous years. As always, first-time events would continue to come to the board of selectmen. Maria, I wanted to see if you just wanted to add any, any thoughts to this item before I open it up for questions?
Sure, so you know, from time to time, we do get recurring event requests, and especially for ones that are, you know, the events are relatively small in nature. For example, the Pumpkin Patch at Boy Scout Hall, that permit that you just approved tonight, those are relatively, again, routine, small-scale events. We typically don't see a lot of changes from year to year. So, and again, sometimes for the nonprofit organizations, when they're preparing their public gathering permit, sometimes they just don't have a lot of lead time on the front end and with advertising and things of that nature, they start to get a little tight on timeline. So it was just a way that we thought that we could help be a bit accommodating and, again, be able to approve those through administrative approvals a little more expeditiously, just to be, again, a little more customer service-oriented for those folks.
Sorry.
Yeah, so we did that for the PAC, right? And the only glitch we kind of had this year, we found, was that it was different because it was a pandemic, right? Like the, the event, you know, that was the same, but the environment had changed. So I'm hoping, you know, nothing more comes out like that again to surprise us. And the only thing that I would ask, and I think you do this anyway, is just to send us the notice of what you've approved, so we know what's going on, right? And you do that today. So that's just the only comment I would have to continue to share. You know, what's being approved, so we can, we might want to go, kind of thing.
Yeah. Thanks, Wendy. I, Maria, I had a question. It's sort of a hypothetical, but not so hypothetical. With an event such as the fly-in, which we know has grown significantly over the years, has to be handled differently because of the growing number of people. Would an event such as that, in your mind, come back to us the next time it's done?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we did have so many difficulties, particularly in regards to traffic management for that event the last time it was held. I think that it would behoove us all to, to bring that back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. And given we had a plane that almost hit some spectators once there, too, I think that events like that, I would, yeah. I trust your judgment. Let's leave it at that.
Okay. I wanted to introduce a motion. Is there a motion effective September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty to authorize the town manager to approve public gathering permits administratively for recurring events without substantive changes?
I'll move that.
One second.
Second.
I, I think Wendy got it in just, just before. Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item K, so we started out our meeting tonight with a public hearing on proposed changes to the ordinance that provides for tax credit for qualifying elderly and disabled homeowners. The changes that we're looking to make to the ordinance ensure that our town's ordinance remains consistent with the state statute, which was recently amended to include trusts. So if a property owner and the beneficiary of the trust are the same person, they would now be eligible for the tax reduction. I wanted to see, before we move forward on this item, is there anything that Maria wanted to add or any questions from the board? Okay. Is there a motion effective September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty to adopt the proposed amendments to the tax credit for elderly and disabled homeowners ordinance as presented, which will be effective twenty-one days after publication in the newspaper, having circulation within the town of Simsbury, and further to authorize a summary of the adopted ordinance be published?
So moved. Second. Give the, we have the first to Mike, I'll take the second.
Okay. Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Has anybody opposed? That motion carries. Item I, the, this is Proposed Updates to Volunteer Firefighter and Ambulance Personnel Tax Abatement Ordinance. So the state has given towns the ability to increase the tax abatement for volunteer firefighter and ambulance personnel. We formed a work group earlier this year, which met and discussed the issue. What's in our packets are various scenarios, including phasing the increase in over several years. Thanks to Jackie and Wendy, who were part of the work group. My understanding is that there was general consensus that the tax abatement should be increased, but not necessarily agreement on, on how quickly to do it. I don't know if that, if that summarizes it, Wendy or Jackie, or if there's other context or thoughts you'd like to add.
Eric, if it's okay, we have Kevin Kowalski, we have Gary Wilcox, and Chief Jim Baldis all on this call. So I think if it's all right, I would like to let them speak to this.
Sure. Thanks for your patience, gentlemen.
No problem, this is Kevin. And Sean, I'll be brief. I just want to, I just wanted to, first of all, thank everyone for this opportunity for us to come before and, and having your subcommittee review the increase for the firefighters that, that do the job here in town. It's a very important tool in our recruitment and retention package that is, that is packaged up for all their volunteers for the responding. As you know, this was a very trying year, especially, and we called on them to do an awful lot of things that we, that we, we didn't think we'd ever have to. And they continue. We continue to respond to areas of concerns. We're putting them in, in harm's way in ways that we've never done before. Having said all that, I just wanted to see if the board will approve the actual abatement as it is written by the state statute and, and not really phase it in as a subset of the way the state has phased it. And they've already built in a phase-in process of fifteen hundred until, until two thousand twenty-three, I believe, and then it'll change again. And additionally, in our ordinance, we phase it in. We don't have the people get it right off the bat. They have to wait two years before they can get it. They do have to succeed in going to the calls at a minimum rate. They have to go to a minimum number of, of training in certain situations, such as last year, if you base on the calls that we call volume, our firefighters had to respond to in excess of a hundred and sixty calls in a year. They'd have to go to training Monday nights, in excess of thirty Monday nights, plus additional training on weekends and, and other evenings. That's just the minimum to meet the standard, to get the tax abatement. So it's not just done as a point of record that they're in the department, so they get it, which is done in other towns around us. We've been very fortunate in maintaining this all volunteer force. And as I mentioned to the committee in the past, this, this group has essentially, the group of firefighters are doing this with, with zero pay. Our, we don't have pay per call. Where surrounding towns do, and they're not finding it too successful. But in the amount of packages that we have available to the firefighters that make it a viable operation includes this tax abatement. So it's extremely important. And I, and I call on this, this group to please pass it, not in a, in a graduated way, but in a way in which the state has, has recommended it. Thank you. And I'll ask, answer any questions I can.
Thank you. What questions do folks have?
Well, I, I was going to make just a couple of comments, if I can, some of my thought process when we met on the task force. That's, and one thing that Kevin had brought to our attention was that it's been fifteen years, I believe, since there's been any change in the abatement that's been given or allowed to change. So it's kind of like a raise, I guess, to their firefighters after fifteen years. So that was, that kind of helped me put that in perspective. And, and the other question that I brought up was really about to see if there was any opportunity for cost sharing between the fire district and the town, as both of us are tax-collecting bodies. And Kevin, you could add to it, but in talking further with Jackie and, and others, it, it sounds like the money that's collected by the fire district, you know, at the mill rate, is specifically earmarked, earmarked only for equipment and infrastructure. I don't know if that's true. I mean, you basically, per your charter, whatever, you would not or could not use this money towards that. And, and that it's, I would assume it's pretty much designated for, you know, your planned capital for the coming years.
I, I can actually clarify that a little bit, if I may. I, I want to. The, the district budget also allows for the paid side of the house. As we discussed, there's two different organizations. It's the Simsbury Fire District, which has the support structure for the volunteer firefighters, which is an incorporation that is a separately funded organization that they, they actually fund the volunteer fire company with the, with the letters, donations, and things of that nature. It doesn't come out of tax money. So there's two separate organizations, actually, and the fire district, like my previous occupation was fire marshal, that was funded by the fire district. So is the facilities manager and dispatchers, and we give money towards the, the PD dispatch for our share, so to speak, and also some tax collection efforts. But in this particular case, this, the state was very clear and did not put in the statute that, that the fire district can participate in that funding stream. It was the town shell. And in other cases, it usually said the town or subdivision of the town. And in this case, they didn't do that, it was the town. And then it is collected separately. In other words, it's not a budgeted item. It is uncollected tax funds, just like the veterans exemptions, et cetera, where we would have to fund a line item if, if we were to do that. So it would be a budget increase of, of substantial proportion.
Thanks. And I have one more question for Maria and the team. So I, I, I just questioned, because it's, we're saying, I guess the first payment is unbudgeted, is that how that is? Because we are doing it in this budget, the, the two thousand twenty-one timeframe, and we didn't plan for it, whereas going forward, it would be planned for? Correct, we'll account for it.
Correct, great. So if you decided to adopt the amendments to the ordinance to take effect for the current tax year, that would be an unbudgeted, unbudgeted loss of revenue for us. And then, moving forward, when we're doing our revenue projections as part of the budgeting process, we would just account for that anticipated loss of revenue moving forward. But for the current year, that would be a little over thirty thousand dollars for the unbudgeted loss of revenue.
And what do we, how do we handle that normally? Like?
Sure, so I mean, there are a few, you know, different ways that could, could potentially help with that. You know, we also, as you know, we budget a collection rate of about ninety-eight and a half percent, when our actual collection rate is ninety-nine and a half percent. So there typically are some excess revenues available to us at the end of the year. We often apply that to general fund, you know, reserves or capital projects, things of that nature. But that, that is one way to potentially make up the revenue loss, or just, you know, through expenditure savings, so perhaps not necessarily needing, you know, as much as was raised in the lobby. So that might be another possibility, and we are monitoring our COVID expenditures rather closely. But that, those would sort of, in normal years, be two of the ways to make up the difference.
Okay. And if it was, if it was to be part of the next tax year, we, we would incorporate it in our budget when we do it in March, but the benefit wouldn't hit the people till next January, twenty twenty-two?
Until July, for the July first.
Oh, so it would only be a six-month delay? Is that?
Correct.
Okay. So that was the only thought I had, if, you know, if it was difficult to work out of the unbudgeted item to budget for it, but it would put them at a six-month delay. So, you know, I'm not sure if they want to add six months. We want to add six months on top of the fifteen years, so.
So I, I guess I want, I wanted to follow up on Wendy's question. You know, and in asking the question, I just want to make it totally clear. I have such respect for the high level of service of the men and women who, who go out on those calls and the, and, and I think that they should get every, every tax break that the state lets them get. But something that I just need to, would want to understand better before moving forward is other communities that have a similar model to us, where you have a taxing authority and then a volunteer fire company. An understanding, is it, you know, is it most common that, that ultimately, that, that budget item hits the town side versus getting picked up by the tax, the other taxing authority, the fire district? Perhaps that's something that our town attorney could, could help clarify. I'd really want to make sure I understand that, that picture. And especially if we, if we were going to phase it in over time, perhaps there could be an opportunity to share in that cost over a, a period of years, so that the, the men and women can get that benefit right away without it, you know, hitting our taxpayers too hard. And, you know, I, I know, you know, don't get me wrong, public safety is going to be front and center in everything we do in budget season. But it also means if we move, move forward with this, there will be more tough conversations, you know, in next spring about other things that we're not going to do. And, and if that's the option, then, then that's okay. That's what I, I think we'll do, or I would be supportive. But, but I want to make sure I really understand what, what all of the options are for paying for this and how other towns with similar structures do it most commonly.
Well, I, I can just add a few points to that for answers, if you want. We can go to Avon next door. They're actually incorporated. What happens over there is the town just gives them X amount of money, you run the fire department. That's how it works, generally speaking, over there. And, and in Avon, they actually pay per call. In other words, they get funds that they may get at the end of the year, depending on how many calls, they may get a check for seven, eight hundred, nine hundred, a thousand dollars. And they also get the abatement, and my belief is, is that they get it regardless. Once they come in, they get the entire amount as soon as they get there. There's no break in it, there's no, you know, like what we have is we get, give them fifty percent until they're in for five years. We don't give them the whole amount. In this case, we're looking to give them seven hundred and fifty up until, from two to five years. And then after that point, we give them fifteen hundred. So in those cases, that's what they have. So the cost of that is a lot higher. In Canton, in their particular case, they have call, call, per call charge also. They do the tax abatement, and they can't maintain their levels. They had to hire seven firefighters over there. So you can imagine the cost of, of doing that. In that case, Granby, they have a different arrangement with their tax abatement. So our surrounding towns are, you know, they're, they have other programs that are, that are vast out there that are paying. And, and like I said, our firefighters are not getting any, any cost pay per call at all. And, and that, that's a, that's a big deal. It's a real big deal. And, and also, too, is I just want to add, is the perception to our membership of the support of, you know, how they want, you know, is it going to be phased in? Or is it going to be, or is it going to be, you know, written as the state has phased it in? Are they, you know, reducing it again? Also, is that the situation here? And I, and I'm sure that's what membership will look at, the perception of that. And that's important, you know? That's why, you know, we're, we feel that we're, we're pretty well set with membership. You know, we're always looking for more. We picked up actually seven new members this, this month, which is unheard of in other departments. So, and I think it's because of the teamwork that's being proposed, you know, that's being done with the membership themselves. And it's a, you know, it's a good And it's a, you know, it's a good place to be. So, um, you know, they have, like I said, we have a minimum response criteria, uh, which phases out a few people that don't respond. You know, enough calls, they don't get the tax abatement. So, you know, there's a lot of built in levels here that we've put on our guys. And, you know, I, I think it's fair that we should get the prescribed amount that the state has allowed for.
Kevin, if I can, or Eric, if I could jump in, this is Jim Baldus, the fire chief.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, and thanks again for having us tonight and giving us an opportunity to speak on this behalf. I think one of the things too that, that, uh, we have to remember, uh, the value of the volunteer force that we have. You know, as Kevin mentioned, you know, we're, we're pretty strong in our membership and it's an unpaid membership. Uh, take the recent storm that we had that came through with the tropical storm. Having a volunteer organization allows us to ramp up uh, without really additional cost. We can, we can put, you know, 30, 40, 50 people on the road to respond to incidences without having to call back people on an overtime basis. So having that volunteer organization and being able to, you know, tell the community, tell our own, our own membership that we're so proud to have a 100% volunteer organization when it comes to firefighting activities, it's, it's, it's a really proud moment. And I think that's, that's something that really needs to be underscored, and we really appreciate the community's support and continued support. We recognize that the tax abatement is just that. It's, it's less taxes that are going to be collected. But in the scheme of things, and if you really look at the dollar amounts, uh, compared to what, you know, what budget numbers are, it's very, very small.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, any other questions from the board?
Um, I mean, given we transferred $2 million last meeting, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the, the 33,000 this year. I mean, I, I, I'm not saying it's, it, 33 is an inconsequential number, but in the grand scheme of how this town is managed fiscally, you know, I, I'm confident we'll be able to make up the shortfall in the current budget year. Um, but Eric, your, your point is right, is that we will have to address this during the budget process as we have in the past, when we've, we've looked at, um, the senior tax ordinance and others. So I, I, I'm okay with that conversation. Um, and if, you know, I'm sure the Board of Finance members are listening, you know, um, you know, we are going to take that into account as we, as we look at our budget. Um, but I, I'm comfortable with, I believe it's what, option A, and I know we have to schedule a public hearing. Um, but moving forward with the, the abatement as, as passed by the legislature. And I, again, given the, you know, given the, the, I think the thoughtful fiscal management that the fire department has shown um, in my 10 years on here of, of, you know, again, not just giving this away, but truly using it as, as a membership, um, tool is an incentive. Um, um, I think is, it has been smartly done. Um, and, uh, I've been, I've been impressed with the, you know, I think the numbers have been pretty consistent, right, Kevin? Um, I don't think that the, um, things have changed in terms of the number of folks taking, taking, uh, utilizing this as, as obviously folks retire off and come on and new folks come in. Um, you know, this program's been pretty consistent for us. And, and again, you've, you've said time and again, and I've talked to a number of members. It's, it's, it's an important tool, as you said, uh, from a perception standpoint, um, that, you know, we do value the, the volunteers, you know, I just quickly pulled up the, you know, the Avon side, you know, they're, they're spending roughly 2 million um, in their budget on firefighting services from, from the town budget. I know it's, it's different to look at it, but there's, um, there's a lot of ways to look at this, but at the end of the day, you know, um, it, it can't go on, on, unsaid, you know, with, and what the, the chief just said, from a scaling standpoint, when we have 50 storm calls, these guys and, and ladies respond, right? And that's not always true in other communities. So long way of saying, I think, I think the legislature has, has written a, a fair phase in for this, and, um, seems like it makes sense to go along with that.
Thanks, Sean.
And if I, if I may, may jump in a little bit, this is Gary Wilcox, the president of the fire district. Uh, Kevin and Jim and Wendy and Sean and, and others have all made excellent points, and I won't rehash those, those points, but the, in, in my mind, the underlying thing is, is that the fire district appreciates all of the volunteer effort that, that the members of the Simsberry Volunteer Fire Company put out. And, and to, to highlight that previous storm where, in actuality, in, in a 24 hour period, we responded or they responded to almost just shy of 100 callouts in one single day. And, and there were, there were people in agencies around the town, Chief Boulder was one, that he was amazed at the response, the immediate response, and that speaks to one of Jim's points before. When, when all of a sudden you have a rogue storm or a major fire that comes through, you have very little time to respond, and we have the ability to respond quicker than, than, than anyone would know. It's, it's, and even better than a paid department, because in a paid department, you've got to put out a call, you've got a request for people to come into work, to provide extra. And, and that, that's a very long delay in, in response and critical response at a real time of emergency. And the Simsberry Volunteer Fire Company has shown time after time that we're on top of that. And when, when the town of Simsbury and the residents of Simsbury need that response, it's guaranteed and they get it. And, and that, and again, that day where, where they, the volunteers responded to almost 100 callouts in one single day, just drives the point home. So what we are asking for is, is your cooperation in, yes, going, going along with the, the state's already predetermined phase in and, and give these volunteers their, their due increase after 15 years of no increase and be proactive. And I, I truly believe that the rewards that the town will continue to benefit as far as the recruitment and retention of these individuals is, is worth every single penny. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, so Sean, it was your suggestion that we, uh, we consider using option A as, um, as the, um, option where we would, uh, we would schedule the public hearing around. Uh, I wanted to hear what others think.
Yeah, just to clarify that, option A, it, I was thinking, it's the chart A, right, scenario A, not option A.
Yep.
Option A is to actually table it.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, it's scenario A, sorry.
To schedule a public hearing is option B.
Yes.
Yep.
Option B with scenario A is my preference, but we would decide that. Well, no, we would put forward language. Right? That would, that would be what we would consider, Maria? Or do we, how do we decide that tonight?
We move on option B.
Right. So if you, um, select a particular scenario, the only thing that would be updated within the ordinance would be the schedule essentially. So, um, we would just clean, you know, clean that up, um, for the document that needs to be available for the public to view to move forward with the public hearing.
So we need to signal a preference tonight, because if we change that, we would have to have another public hearing, because that would be a substantive change, right?
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, I would be comfortable with moving forward with scenario A, um, and scheduling the public hearing for our next meeting. Um, other thoughts? So I, uh, I hope that the guests on, uh, the phone tonight or on the call tonight, um, know that these questions are, uh, coming from a place of looking to understand. Um, there is absolutely no disrespect for, uh, for your department and the amazing, uh,
We absolutely understand that. We absolutely understand that. Yeah.
Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020 to schedule a public hearing for 6:00 PM at the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on October 14th, 2020 to solicit public comment regarding the proposed amendments to the Volunteer Firefighter and Ambulance Personnel Tax Abatement Ordinance? Um, and we would, uh, uh, scenario, uh, A, um, would be the proposed amendments to the ordinance. I hope we frame that okay. Jackie moved it?
Yes.
Second.
Sean seconded. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thanks for staying with us tonight.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your support.
Yes, thank you.
Item M is the, uh, Town Manager's Employment Agreement for, uh, 2021 through 2024. Um, so what's in your packet is a three-year employment agreement, uh, for Maria Capriola, our town manager. Uh, this spring, the Board of Selectmen asked the Personnel Subcommittee to provide a recommendation on whether to extend the Town Manager's contract, which expires at the end of January. Uh, the committee sought public input as part of the process. In June, we recommended a contract extension to the full board. So the, the contract in your packet was prepared by the town attorney, and there are a couple of changes that I wanted to highlight from her current contract. Uh, first, Maria requested an additional week of, uh, paid time off based on her years of, uh, experience in a similar role. Um, that's a common practice in the public and private sector to attract and retain good people. It's also a benefit that the town has extended numerous times in other circumstances to other employees. Um, so the new contract calls for five weeks, uh, of vacation a year, which is an increase from four. Second, uh, in, in the unlikely scenario that the town manager were to pass away while in her role, um, we would allow her family to stay on the town's health insurance for a three-month period. And when we discuss this item, it's a benefit that we also want to formally extend to all town employees. So we'd like to, to formalize this benefit. Um, those are our two substantive changes, uh, between the new contract and the current one. Another smaller point that I wanted to, um, highlight, and perhaps Melissa, would you be able to, to screen share? Since this is something that the, um, we were not able to review in executive session. Perfect. So what, uh, you know, section three, um, paragraph B is saying is that if this board or a future board were to, to ask, uh, the town manager to do something that, um, goes against our code of ethics, goes against our town charter or some applicable law, and then we were to fire her as a result of that, um, she would still be eligible for, uh, the eight months of, um, of salary. Um, so that is, um, that is, was not part of the version that we reviewed a couple of weeks ago, so I wanted to point that out. I wanted to see if there are any questions.
And Eric, just to further on that, so basically the words unreasonable and lawful have been added, right? And with the outline in the town charter code of reference, it's really just adding some words to clarify, I think, what the intent is. Um, and again, hopefully the situation will never happen, but obviously a court or an arbitrator would need to get involved to determine what's lawful and not lawful, but, um, I mean, to make the, the change, the wording makes sense to me.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Any other questions or, or comments? Thanks to, um, Sean and Wendy, who are members of the Personnel Subcommittee, uh, for working on this with us. Let me find the motion. Is there a motion effective September 29th, 2020 to execute the Town Manager's Employment Agreement between the town of Simsbury, Connecticut, and Maria Capriola for a three-year term commencing January 29th, 2021 and expiring on January 29th, 2024?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Any further conversation?
Eric, I have a question. It's Mike. I just realized when we originally did Maria's contract, it was for a three-year term, so that it fell due in the middle of the Board of Selectmen's term. If we do another three-year term, that's at the end of the two-year term.
Hold on, I'm doing, I don't do math in public. You're right.
Damn it, Mike, you're right.
Good looking and right. Go figure.
Huh.
Well.
Is this something we should table and talk about the timeline?
That would be my suggestion.
I, I think that's the right thing to do.
That's an excellent catch. Yeah, the intent was to keep it. We talked about that. Yeah, the intent was to keep it off, off the election year.
Right.
Exactly.
Obviously not to, to have it co-mingle with, with the politics. Um, yeah. And again, I don't want to put folks in a position to decide two or four or a different number right now.
Right.
Um, we can adjourn to executive session. We're getting a note, right, Eric?
Yes, we, we can. Is, is tonight's meeting a special meeting?
No. We scheduled it this way, knowing that, that Yan Kipor was yesterday.
Um, I, I'd be, um, I'd be fine with adjourning to executive session. Um, why, we, we could add this to executive session.
I would, I would recommend that we just go into executive session now, and, um, if we can resolve it quickly, um, we come back out and take the vote, and if we can't, we just table it.
Okay.
Doesn't, just a question, did, didn't Maria and the attorney have to look at the contract? So are we just going to decide on what we think the timeframe should be and then send it back to them?
I assume if it's four years, she's not going to say no. If it's two years, I think she's going to want to review it. So that's a fair point. Um, yeah.
And then four years, is that a long, you know, considered a long contract? You know, I, I don't know what the normal contract is, so.
I don't think that is.
Can you answer all the questions?
Yeah. All right, Eric, let's table this.
Okay. Um, you want to make the motion, Sean?
Well, first we need to take the motion off the table.
Oh, um, I withdraw that motion. Is that all I have to do?
Um, who ma- did you make it or did I make it?
I think you did, Sean.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion and then Mike, um, you withdraw your second.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question before you do that?
Yeah.
The, so the timeframe on here says 2021 to 2024, right? So I, I guess it still overlaps, but it, do you know what I'm saying? Because election years are, are, you know, the odd number of years.
Yeah, but she would be, she would be ending her contract about, you know, a couple of months after the election, so it's, it, we really want to stagger it, so there's.
Yeah, hold on, do the math on the election though. All right, so the election is in November of 21, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, yeah, and then to your point, Eric, the, the election is in November of 23. So, yeah.
Would expire a couple of months later.
Okay, right.
So the outgoing board would make the decision.
They couldn't sign the contract. That's what we ran into last time.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a timing issue. Let's get this right. There's no urgency to do it tonight. It was just to get it cleaned up. We can certainly, let's take, let's make sure we get this right. This is our first renewal.
Yeah. I agree. Um, is there anything to do quicker?
No.
Seriously, Mike, thank you for catching this. Is there, um?
I'll move to table, Eric.
I'll second. Okay, Mike. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Maria, you can come back on. Um, moving on to appointments and resignations, is there a motion, uh, effective September 29th, 2020 to reappoint, uh, Tom Earl and Charmaine Seavy to the Economic Development Commission for three-year terms, effective October 10th, 2020, expiring on October 10th, 2023?
I'll move.
Don't move. Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, review of minutes from our regular meeting September 14th, 2020? Uh, any feedback on the minutes? Okay, then they stand. Are there any selectman liaison and subcommittee reports?
I was just going to mention, um, the, the schools, and I don't have firsthand knowledge, but I believe they started back full-time this year, other than the secondary, the, um, high school, junior high, who is starting to evaluate what they're going to do. Is that true? I'm asking as the liaison.
The, it's a, the, the little kids had a two-week hybrid model.
Yeah.
Kindergartners of first grade, and then the, the upper elementary are back after four weeks, and then I think the high school is back after six weeks.
So didn't, well, I thought the 29th was a start date for all of them going back this week.
I can only speak for my third grader. She's in, she's in school full-time now.
Yeah, okay, so that. Yeah, okay. So that I think that's true. I think the K through six is back this week full time. And they're evaluating the upper grades starting this week.
No, I mean, the the plan was hybrid and there there is a start, there is a go back date, I believe, in two weeks, Wendy. And then kindergarten went back two weeks ago because mine, I have a kindergartner.
Yeah, the 14th. They went back the 14th. Everybody else went back today. And then the high school, junior high, they're looking at that now for when to go back. I don't know if there's a firm date is what I was trying to get at. And I just, these are just numbers from last week. I just wanted to say that they the numbers were down, the enrollment was down a bit this year. And that there is about 18% of the population opted for the distance learning. So and then they they can't really just hop back in when they go live. They they're basically designated as distance and you have to give a heads up and kind of like apply and wait. It was a two week period. They did say the class sizes at that point were large for distance learning. That was that was kind of all I I really had. But the the kindergarten numbers were down and the bus ridership was down, probably because parents are driving people to school. I don't know what how that happens now when they're full time, as I have no children. And then just the other thing I wanted to mention was aging and disability finally regrouped after a hiatus since, you know, before COVID with Diana. Diane Yaslee as the the lead, and she's taking full charge of that group. So they should be pretty active.
Great. Thanks, Wendy. Any other subcommittee or liaison reports? Okay. Anything under communication anyone want to raise? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session with Maria Capriola to discuss her annual performance review?
Go move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.